Both they can decide.
Sure.
Amy Warfield, Glenn Mills, Robert Newfeld and myself, Nicholas Priest.
Okay, we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion if we approve the list.
And request that the board waive the fifteen day waiting period, please.
I'll make that, I'll just make that motion.
Thanks.
Motion by Jim, second by?
Second.
Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. Five zero zero ready, I mean four zero one, he's not here. Michael's not here, sorry about that. Okay, I believe now it's one ninety-seven, are we all set with that one?
Yep.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we touched upon this briefly at our last meeting, but the time has come where we need to call for the full water ban in order to maintain the town's water supply. As you are aware, this is a requirement from the state in order for, to allow us to utilize an emergency water connection we have with the town of Lexington. John Sanchez has informed me that we need to take the mill pond down for cleaning and we can't wait any longer in order to do that. Best way to describe what's going on here is that we rely heavily on the mill pond in the summer. The more we rely on it, the quicker it needs to be cleaned, the more it needs to be cleaned, the less water it can produce. So it's a little bit of a vicious cycle as it relates to our water. I know this is generally a very unpopular thing for the board to have to do, but we're very happy to, at least to have been able to make it to this part of the year where at least a lot of our residents seem to be cutting back on, on their outdoor water use at this time of year anyway. So, John's here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Mrs. Sanchez.
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of things to it. Number one is I want to thank all the residents and businesses for doing the best to comply with the ongoing even odd water restrictions we have. That's what had allowed us to actually be here pretty much at the end of September by keeping the demand as low as we have during the year. It was about three point seven million gallons a day, which is a lot less than what we've seen in the past. There's been a few letters going out, of course, trying to enforce it, but the majority of residents and businesses have complied with it and I do thank them for that. On the other hand, everybody talks about the MWRA. We're going to be here soon to give you a full update. For now, I will tell you that we are not tied into the MWRA yet, but we are on track to submit a draft environmental impact report before Thanksgiving. We have a couple of more meetings that we're going to be attending to and to get all the information we need to submit. And hopefully that will get us through a final environmental impact report to be done through the winter and get a resolution before the end of the winter. That's the plan.
Fantastic. Gentlemen, you got anything to?
How are we notifying the public?
Typically, what we do is the first thing we'll do is like reverse nine-one-one, we'll put it on the board as well. And it just happened that our water billing for second meters, for irrigation meters go out shortly. So with, with that, we'll send a whole notification to just about everybody who has an irrigation system.
And with that information we have here, what can and cannot be done?
Correct.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I want to reiterate, reiterate what you said. I also want to thank the residents for their cooperation. It's been a hot summer, it's actually a hot fall now. And I know there were years where we were over five million gallons a day and now what did you say, three point seven?
Three point seven.
That does show that everybody's working together and I just want to thank them for their cooperation and thank your staff again for letting it go this long, I guess I could say, but thank you to everybody that, that helped.
All right, thank you.
John, this is as of September thirtieth.
Correct, well, I need, actually, in order to submit to DEP, we have to have a full water ban. So by using the September thirtieth day, that's the day we will use with DEP as well and the MWRA, so yes.
So the water ban is issued on September thirtieth?
But we will start the process of making it known to people immediately.
Okay, all right, good. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, first off, thank you for everything that you're doing around this. I know it's, it's a lot to balance both trying to move us toward the MWRA while balancing our water usage on a daily basis in terms of consumption. Remind me again, just what are our, what's the enforcement if people are breaking the water ban?
So we, the first thing we do, actually, we, we've been doing one step more this year. We actually have been calling everybody who we have a phone number for, whether it is businesses, sometimes homeowners. Try to, because our goal is for them to actually use less water, it's not really to issue a fine. I mean, we're really in the business of reducing the water intake. So, so we've been doing that. If, if we're not able to reach them, what if there's no response? The next step, we send them a warning saying that they are in violation. The next step is a fifty dollar fine. And then if there's still no compliance, there is a hundred dollar fine for each instance that they are in violation of the water ban.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
You all set?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
So just, yeah, need an approval on this? Gentlemen?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the issuing of the full water ban. Do you want me to say effective September thirty? Effective September thirtieth?
I'll second that.
Fourth by a second, by Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. One absent, Betty, four zero, four one zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
I don't go anywhere.
I have one more, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one ninety-eight is electric vehicle charging stations. We have, Mr. Sanchez is here to update the board on the charging station that we planned for behind Town Hall. You may recall, he was here earlier and we went through a couple iterations on sort of where to place that. But now we're ready to prepare the infrastructure for the charging station. I know that there was, there was a, a map, a map that looks like it was put together with crayon that John did.
I resent that comment.
Followed by some specific, very well-done engineering plans in much more detail than John did. But what I wanted to point out to the board on that is that we'll be putting in the infrastructure for two spaces as denoted by the number one on John's plan. But that infrastructure will be there and be able to support additional spaces if we choose to add additional charging, charging stations on there as we, as we expand that program. So I think the initial piece of equipment can serve as two spaces, each one of the pieces of equipment. But the infrastructure we'll be putting in can, can fit phase two and phase three as shown on John's plan. So we'll be able to expand this out to six, six spaces with some additional equipment. But we're going to start off with phase one with just the two spots.
So going, going, going further with this and forward, would John be doing any more of the plans or do we need to get crayons or what do we need?
Pardon me, Joe?
I use highlighters. I, I use, I'll upgrade to highlighters in the future.
It was asked if we need to get more crayons for John if the plans go further.
Now that I see it, looks like he used highlighters and not crayons, so he's a little bit more advanced than we had anticipated, but.
It's, it's one of those, go ahead.
I think it's important for the board to know that the, the infrastructure we're putting in is expandable to a couple of additional units and John's already mapped out how we might do that as we move forward, so.
I think it's a good program, gentlemen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who's going to be responsible for it? Give me, give me some wrap up there as to?
Well, two things, if I, if I may, just one thing that town administrator did not mention is that this installation is going to be free of charge to the town of Burlington. This is part of a grant that we're going to get through EverSource. The installation of the actual units, the charging units will be borne, the cost will be borne by the town. But the biggest cost is actually getting the, the power lines all the way across the road to where we are. Once it is installed, the facilities department will maintain the units, whether they are directly maintained by us or through our contract. We were looking at different types of units, which require different maintenance at this point, but.
And where is the original source coming from that they're charging?
The original source is going to be actually a Town Hall annex where there is two transformers, like outside of John Keeler's window, there were two transformers, so it'll come out of one of those transformers. And it was going to cross the road to the island where we have the hydrant. You might seen that or there's a sign too that says Town Hall parking for businesses only, something, I think we have something in that island. So it's going to be right there.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, does this play any role in our ongoing efforts for green community status?
We will take credit for it. Once a complete yes, and we're still within that window that we can take credit for any approach we do right now.
Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's great that we're doing this. I think it's, you know, as, as we look to, you know, become more sustainable as a community, it's, it's, it's a really nice thing to be putting in the Town Hall parking lot. One question I have is if we were to fully expand out to all three phases, how would that, if at all, affect parking mostly for the employees? I know obviously when there's like events up there, it's, it's packed, so I would imagine that that's just going to be the way it is moving forward. But if we remove, remove these six spots basically and say they're only for EV, you know, do, do we still have enough capacity for the people who work for the town?
No, two, two parts of it. We hope that in the future, I mean, the whole idea of this electric vehicle charging station is that people will have the, the need to charge. So people will probably be juggling around to use those spaces, so it'll be probably employees using the spaces. The Town Hall, other than when we have those major events, does have additional parking spaces, which is why we chose the Town Hall as the area where we wanted to install them. There was some talk about using maybe the annex or using thirty-three Center Street. There's just not enough spaces right there that we could have taken away, that's why we picked this one to begin with.
Right.
And, and we're only doing two, we're going to play by ear, see the need as the need grows. And again, if, if a world here is true about going electric and then over the next five to ten years, then a lot of our employees will be using those spaces.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the phase approach is definitely, in my opinion, the, the right way to go. This unmarked spot here, kind of tucked in the, a little behind the, the island, is that just, is that becoming a non-spot because of the way the transformers are being installed?
No, there will be a regular parking spot.
It will?
Yeah, and, and we could potentially actually add another charging station to it as well. But the way we're proposing this is to make it easier for the installation, in the beginning, we're not thinking about using that as a charging space.
Great, thank you.
I think at some point in the future too, it's not, it's pretty likely that we'll, likely have electric vehicles in the town fleet as well, so we'll be using them for not just employees, but for, for our own, our own vehicles as well.
Yeah, it's great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yep.
How long does it take to charge a car?
Well, it, it depends, all right? So you have like three level chargers, they call it level one, level two, level three. Level one is that people can connect directly to a, a house and plug in your vehicle and that will take probably overnight or longer to, to do your car. The chargers that we are going to install at level two, which is two hundred and forty volts, and typically you don't want to have people there more than three hours. Because typically, I mean, people when, by the time they come to park, they're not fully empty, so they're going to charge and in three hours, they should be able to charge up. And then you have the level three chargers, which are the ones that you probably read about or hear about, that in half an hour, we will charge a vehicle. Tesla has those. Right now, it's the only vehicle that we know that uses those chargers. In the future, we're probably going to see more and more of those, but we're not shooting to do that. That's four hundred and eighty volts, which we're not going to provide through this one, so it's going to be two hundred and forty.
Enforcement, how do you get people to move out of those spots?
And this is something we can, we, we should be able to talk about in the future about a policy and how we want to do this. One of the areas, one of the places or one of the ways in which we will police them is by making it free to park and charge for the first three hours. And then after that, you charge for parking. And there is ways to, as you go in and you sign up or you use your credit card to pay for it, it'll be free if you're over there for the amount of time that we allow you to be. After that, you may make five dollars an hour for parking or whatever you want to do, and that will make people move. That's typically what you find in hotels and malls and plazas, et cetera, that is free for the first two or three hours and after that, the charge show up. I want to say at a large rate to park your vehicle there, if I may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, John, I'm, you know, I'm unfamiliar with the, how these work. So does a person have to access the unit first with like a card?
Yes.
So they can't just plug it in and then walk away, they have to enter some information?
Right, there, there are many, again, there's many chargers, always the one you have at home, you wouldn't have to do that. And we could have the style here too as well. Like if we had some in the, say, DPW garage, it'll be one that you're able to just go and plug it in and, and nothing else and you, you wouldn't have a smart box. But then you can have the chargers that have a smart box in which it'll control a lot of those things. Who charges, when, how, how long, you know, et cetera.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. So, John, just, there's a, I think there's quite a bit to go over once this gets approved to, as far as like who's going to be using it and how long they can use it for and what we're going to charge them. It's open to the public, they can use it. I'm sure at some point, the town will have six or seven out there for our vehicles, whether they're, they got you guys running around town to check out spots and everything else. So I think it's a great program that, that's starting out very small with two. And I've got a funny feeling by the time I'm no longer on the seat, there'll be seven or eight of them up there, you know what I mean? But I'd like to commend you on at least starting the initiative on this, so.
Yeah, my staff, Rachel Kaplan is the one that has been doing all the work on, when it comes to electrical and now with the, with the offender as well, so I'll bring the congrats to her. And we'll add that tonight, what we're waiting for, for you is to have a vote approving the concept so we can install the, the underground equipment. Not necessarily the policy on how we're going to do this yet, because we, we have time to do that.
I definitely agree with the, with, with this whole program, I would definitely want to be on that policy. Not on the policy on the committee to, you know, set up the guidelines for it, okay? Other than that, I think we need an approval, gentlemen?
Yeah, I'll make the, the motion to approve the installation of the phase one EV charging stations behind Town Hall.
Motion by Nick, second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, John. Okay, one ninety-nine.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, we had on here the standing agenda item to approve warrant articles. I think there was probably one article that was potentially something for the board to consider. And that was the presentation that we received a couple of weeks ago from Nordblum. I spoke to Mr. Buckley this morning, he indicated to me that they would be unable to attend the meeting tonight. And I think, you know, based on that and the fact that the board would typically not take a position on the zoning article. I know that the board was pretty excited about the potential for a unique housing program for the seniors, but I, you know, based upon my understanding is we haven't had enough time to sort of get too deep into the details of that program. So ask what the pleasure of the board is in terms of whether you want to take a position on that article, if you just want to defer to the planning board or whatever, whatever the board wishes to do in relation to that article.
Before I, before I give my opinion on this, I'm going to actually go to the board and get everyone's opinion to see what they want to do and then we'll go from there.
Sure.
Because I already know how I feel about this, I'll talk you length about it, so.
Question, if I could, does voting for the zoning affect the?
This one you can leave on.
Low-income part that we still haven't dealt with yet, is there any conflict there?
No, there's, there's, there's no impact to your vote on the zoning article itself and the affordable housing agreement will have to come back to the board at some point in the future anyway.
And can the vote be, we support the idea of the zoning without just voting, I'll write yes?
It can be whatever the board wishes, you know, whatever message you wish to convey, convey to town meeting.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree mostly with the fact that we don't have a lot of information, so I'm not comfortable voting on this myself, so I just don't feel comfortable yet.
Yep, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll say that it's a very creative and unique proposal. I think that, you know, we don't very often, if at all, you know, have developers coming and, and offering this kind of public-private partnership. I think that, I mean, not to speak for you gentlemen, but I think that we all kind of said that we were a little hesitant to just vote on it, having so many things up in the air. You know, if, if we were to say that we are in favor of the idea, the concept, and that, you know, we'd be open to further discussions, I'd be willing to vote on something like that. Otherwise, I would say that it probably behooves us to, to reserve the, the, the right to defer to planning on this.
Okay, thank you. My feel, my feelings on this is just, basically just hold off. I think that there's so many questions, there's so many things going on with this that I'm not going to get into it, but I just assume not having an opinion on it right now and until, until we find out what's really going on with it. So to move forward, Paul, do you want an approval on this, but we're not going to have any, I don't know, we're soon enough to make a motion.
The moderator may just ask if the select man had a position on this, as long as one of us can get up and sort of describe sort of the feelings of the board. You can say that there was no vote taken, generally in favor of the concept of what they're trying to do with the elderly housing, but just didn't have enough information in, enough time to sort of sort through it, I think is the sense of what I'm getting from the board.
Okay, okay. We asked, she's sitting right here, is, is that feasible for us to do?
Yeah, it's absolutely feasible. The planning board is the only required entity that needs to take a vote on it.
Okay, okay. So I think at this point here, I think there are the great gathering from everybody's feelings, I think we're not going to take a position on that until, and if someone gets asked a question on it, we'll get up and answer it at town meeting.
That'd be fine.
Gentlemen, you okay with that?
Fine, I mean.
All right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
One last item up here, we have a request for the use of the common from the recreation department for three events that the board's probably pretty familiar with. Trucktober, which is the food truck festival, October fifth. Five K Turkey Truck, Saturday, November twenty-third. And tree lighting at the town common is Saturday?
December seventh at four.
December seventh at four, so those are three requests from the rec for the use of the town common, which I think you guys are pretty familiar with those three events.
Sorry, Paul, was that updated from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Betty. Sorry.
It's all good. Do you want us to vote all, all at once, all three of them?
Whatever, whatever, the pleasure of the board, that's fine.
Individually?
I just have a few questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, do we, just so we don't, not vote appropriately, do any of these have rain dates?
The only one that had a rain date so far was the tree lighting.
Tree lighting, yeah, which is December tenth, Tuesday, December tenth.
Okay, so someone would like to make a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. Do we approve all three events, Trucktober on October fifth, the Five K Turkey Truck, November twenty-third, and the holiday tree lighting for December seventh for the rain slash snow date, I guess I'll say. They probably wouldn't cancel it because of snow, but on December tenth.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Chris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain. Mike's still not here. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have an executive session on here, do, do you want to run through subcommittee reports and things, things of that nature before we?
Yeah, absolutely, that'd be, it's a great idea, thank you. We'll go right to subcommittees, of course. Chris, was that with you?
You having a good time?
And I was looking right at you too, and I said, oh my God, he's going to smack me, it kept coming out of my mouth, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's all right. So I'll, I'll keep this as short as humanly possible. Nothing to report on ISAC. Gentlemen, we all forwarded a, a letter today from somebody who had used Grandview and was just singing the praises of Sandy Madigan and the facility. And I think that is just, you know, a, a small piece of, you know, the great things that are happening over there. It's a, it's a wonderful piece of property and a, you know, unique piece of property to town, and I'm very happy to have it. Got that email.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. The fire department is having a fire safety open house at the substation, one fourteen Terrace Hall Ave. That's on Sunday, October sixth, from ten AM to one PM. They have a few demonstrations planned, one is the Jaws of Life rescue tool, a tour of the vehicle, kids can climb on the fire trucks. They're going to have a water target hose drag, not sure exactly what that is. And they're going to be offering fire safety tips and there'll be some refreshments provided, there's pizza donated by Papagino's and there'll be water and snacks provided, donated by weapons.
Fantastic, that's all I have.
Target.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, the test that the town of Burlington does for police candidates and not civil service, that the town does our own tests, that is coming, this coming Saturday morning. There's a deadline that we can still meet and that is this Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. So if anybody is still interested and they haven't made out an application, you still have until Wednesday. And all this information is on the Burlington Police website, so if you want to go on there or you know somebody, tell them to go on and, but it's this Saturday, so. I don't know if you know how many numbers there are, Jim, but the, the numbers of people taking the test just for this town have skyrocketed because the department as a whole is just extraordinary.
Typically hundreds of people taking that, just our example.
Thank you, you have one more item that you?
Well, I just wanted to just acknowledge the DPW, especially Mike Canonis and the police department for their efforts today with the Amazon gate, I guess you could call it. All the packages that were dumped at the cemetery and the staff at the, at the cemetery notified the police and it's on the news channels. Police department went and delivered the packages and just one of those things that when they happen, that how the whole community, employees and residents come together.
It's nice that we know that police department can actually deliver Amazon packages now, so we can have them just sent there and they can bring them to my house. There's a few things I'm going to go, I'll wait to my chairman's report, so you have anything right now?
I just had one thing, Mr. Chairman, as, as many, as you guys are aware, we had a major power catastrophe at the mall last Thursday. And I just want to let the board members know, I got to see our department's amazing inaction at a, at a very, very serious incident. Police and fire response was incredible, the building department, the board of health, they were all there, everybody was working in concert just to try to get the mall back up and running as soon as possible. So I know that the mall manager, Justin Feldhouse, thanked me profusely a multitude of times just for the professionalism and the response that our, our community provided him. So it was a major, major incident cutting through the power line, but they were up and running by five in the afternoon, which I guess is a, is a miracle in, in what, in what they were trying to overcome. So I just want to say thank you to all of our departments that were there and again, just pass along that the mall manager made it known to me how that, you know, of all the places that he's worked, he's never dealt with such professional folks as we have working in our department, so very appreciative of that.
Thank you. We'll go right to.
One quick note I could, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
We're not running out of time. The board of health is going to give their official report tomorrow night at their meeting about the hazardous waste collection day, but they knocked it out of the park on Saturday. They had over four hundred people, they'll give the exact number, people who showed up to dispose of hazardous waste from their residential stash. And they were all very pleased and they have, they've got it down to a system that you're not locked into traffic, they get you in, they get you out, it's always done up at the Francis Wyman School.
That's great.
They, they, they do a fabulous job, so kudos to the board of health.
Excellent. Do you have a, a report for the town administrator report or was it just all set with what you just did?
That was what I was, that was the report.
So I'll just go over chairman's report real quick. I really don't have a report, it's more of like, just wanted to go over again with the hunting season, starts October seventh. I don't know if we have a meeting before that or not.
I think we have one on October seventh, I think.
Is that the day we have one? So that's the day it's opening up, just to keep the residents aware. Sunday, this Sunday, eight o'clock at the district, we have the PMC challenge for the children. They're doing very well up there right now as far as, I think it was said they had a hundred and seventy children already registered to ride their bikes for the two point three miles it is. So they're doing quite well with the, with the donations and that all goes to cancer. Once again, I'm going to really quick go over what you had just said, Paul, about our town. I heard a great number of things about a lot of different people in this town that did a wonderful job at the Burlington Mall. I guess Mr. Angerson really stepped up and, and became the man up there, just telling people where to go and what to do and how to get it done in a positive way that nobody was aggravated. But I did, I heard quite a bit about it, so I just wanted to go over that real quick. Other than that, I don't have anything, so apparently at this time, citizens' time, we'll go that quick. Anybody out there want to say anything? Stop, shook his head, no, we're all set with that one. So from there, we'll go to reading the, Nick, you want to read that for executive section?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Pursuant to General Law Chapter thirty A, twenty-one A three, the board of selectmen will convene to executive session as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating positions of the public body. In order to discuss, consider litigation in the matter of Herb Chambers Cambridge Street LLC versus planning board for the town of Burlington, Land Court nineteen, MISC two eighty, two sixty-eight. With the board of selectmen adjourning from the executive session and reconvening an open session for the purpose of finalizing as necessary and closing the regular hearing.
Okay.